Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November seventeenth Nassau County Planning Commission. Everybody please rise, place your hand over your heart for the Pledge of Allegiance. John Wolkall, please.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Sakowicz. Commissioner Colati.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Ellerby.
Here.
Third Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Vice Chair Greenfield. And Chairman Shapiro. We have a quorum.
You didn't call Commissioner Foreman.
I apologize. Commissioner Foreman.
Okay.
Still have a quorum, correct.
All right, can I have a motion to for acknowledgement receipt of the transcripts?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's start with OASPAC.
The first case is a public common period was opened on October eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. I believe we are asking for another adjournment to December fifteenth.
That's what I was gonna do. Is there anybody here for that OASPAC case that would like to be heard? Not seeing anybody, I'll take a motion for adjournment to December fifteenth.
So, Mr. Chair, on OASPAC File Number Five of two thousand and twenty-two, I think we're gonna continue the public hearing to our next meeting?
Correct. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to the next one.
So, OASPAC File Four of two thousand and twenty-two, this property is in Old Bethpage, town of Oyster Bay, right off Old Country Road. Section forty-seven, Block E, part of Lot seven forty-nine D. E, sorry. The county, the town of Oyster Bay is requesting to grant an easement by the, by the county. So the town can provide access road to an adjacent, to the adjacent soccer fields. DPW approves this release without condition. At the OASPAC meeting last night, the committee approved the easement without condition.
Commissioners?
So for this item, the, the action is really fairly limited. It's just an easement for transverse in that part of what we see in the image here. Where the road crosses over that, that little strip, basically.
Correct. The county would only be granting an easement for the portion of the teal highlighted portion of the map that's up. That traverses the current roadway.
And we would not be selling it then, we'd just maintain ownership, but we would allow this use is what the idea would be.
Just an access easement, correct.
We did have a hearing on this at our last meeting, we closed the public hearing. Although you see a lot of trees in the image here, as was pointed out, there's no impact on trees by this proposal. It's just the road being able to be used is the idea. There may, there may be some people here from the town and such, but as we said, we did have the public hearing at the last meeting, it kinda went over it all, I think.
Right, we do have representatives from the town of Oyster Bay as well as the county, if there's any questions, if not.
Yes, we say, Mr. Chairman, they, you know. Yeah, yeah.
No, it's not necessary, the hearing's closed.
And there really wasn't any outstanding questions, as I recall from the hearing.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that for OASPAC Number Four of two thousand and twenty-two, that we recommend in an asset legislature that they approve the requested easement.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Neil, did you include?
I should've done a secret on that. So included with that motion, the negative on the secret.
Second it? Anybody second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Next case is six of two thousand and twenty-two. This is the property at East Meadow, town of Hempstead, eight thirty-two Merrick Avenue. Section fifty, Block two seventy-two, part of Lot two seventy-two. Cornell Cooperative Extension is requesting a amendment to the license agreement they have with the county of Nassau. To include a portion of the property that was burnt down and demolished. They would like to install a dynamic learning center at that location. The, at the OASPAC meeting yesterday, they approved the amendment without condition. Okay, we have representatives from Cornell and the county, if there are any questions from the commissioners.
So many of us are familiar with the work of Cornell Cooperative Extension in Nassau County. The team was here for the hearing at our last meeting and answered a lot of questions about what their plans are. The programs are open to members of the public and they really, in this commissioner's opinion, they do some great work for the people of Nassau County. And their proposal to be able to provide this additional service by having this project go forward. Seems like a really good thing that we should be supportive of. There were, the record was created, we did have neighbors that raised just some questions about the level of activities and things of that nature at the site. All that was, you know, generated and as we've said, that here, that record will go to the Nassau County Legislature before they act. If we vote today to recommend this action, so the record was created. The legislature may also have an additional hearing, so if there are any concerns from neighbors, they would have that additional opportunity to go to the legislature and be heard. So I do wanna acknowledge that there were some points raised by neighbors. But in the opinion of this commissioner, I felt it was a very strong proposal by Cornell Cooperative Extension and a really great project that we wanted, I think we should be supportive of. Comments, I don't know if other people have comments.
Any else have any comments? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for OASPAC Number Six of two thousand and twenty-two. That we would amend the current license agreement with Cornell Cooperative Extension and allow this new project to be added. As part of the amended and extended license agreement. And that we include a negative declarations, there's no negative environmental impact from this project, so that is my motion. This would be a recommendation to the Nassau Legislature. This would be a recommendation to the Nassau Legislature which has a final say on this item.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Next case is Ospac File Seven of two thousand and twenty-two. This is a property east of eleven eleven Verbena Avenue. The adjoining property owner would like to purchase a three hundred and forty-six square foot parcel from the county. At the Ospac meeting yesterday, they approved the sale without condition.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody have any questions, comments? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on Ospac Number Seven of two thousand and twenty-two. This is what we classically call a wedge property where a piece of county land would be sold to the neighbor that it's immediately adjacent to, in this case, it's already essentially part of the property in this, in a functional sense because there's a fence there and such. So the recommendation would be first that we approve a negative declaration, that we recommend to the legislature that this piece of property be sold by the county to the property owner and also with the condition that it be merged into the tax lot so that we don't have a problem of the properties being separate in the future.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
Last Ospac case is eight of two thousand and twenty-two. The property is east of fifty-seven Stratford, sorry, west of fifty-seven Stratford South in Roslin Heights, Section seven, Block two fifty-nine, part of Lot Three. The county would like to lease approximately three thousand square foot portion of the property for nine additional parking spots for employees only to the shopping center directly to the east. At yesterday's Ospac meeting, they approved the release, I'm sorry, the lease without condition.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
So on this one, we have a busy parking lot with demand for slots and so it's an opportunity to expand the parking lot. This would be something that the county would receive compensation for because it's county land. However, rather than sell the land, the county would retain ownership by allowing for a lease of the land, retaining the ownership gives the Department of Public Works control over the land in the event that we need to access it because there are some facilities right nearby. The chunk of property would not be the entire property being sold, so the images there show both the entire property and then the other image shows the piece of it that would be sold, that would be leased. So Ospac Number Eight of two thousand and twenty-two, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a neg deck and that we recommend to the Nassau County Legislature that they approve the lease of the property.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
I think next on the agenda is an application for reduction of surety bond for NCPC File nineteen eighty-six F dash four map of Country Point Villas at East Meadow, Beachwood Meadow East LLC applicant. And the applicant has applied to the Planning Commission to reduce the surety bond for the subdivision known as Country Point Villas at East Meadow. The proposed reduction in bond is from the original amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent to two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars four hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent. This major subdivision consists of three point oh five acres formerly a florist on East Meadow Avenue in the hamlet of East Meadow and includes forty-eight residential units in five two and a half story buildings and a common area with parking for a hundred and twenty-eight cars to be owned by the HOA. The Planning Commission approved the preliminary subdivision in July seven, on July seventh, two thousand and sixteen. The Planning Commission approved the final subdivision on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. The following items on the bond were deemed to be one hundred percent complete and are therefore being requested be taken off the bond. Grading, paving, sidewalks, curbs, storm drainage, sanitary sewers, catch basins, existing sidewalk removal, dry wells, diffusion wells, fencing, water mains, sediment, and erosion control measures. Nassau County's chief inspector inspected the bonded items that the applicant deemed to be complete and concluded in a memo dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two that all such items had been completed to his satisfaction and the bond should be reduced to the amount requested. Should be noted, this was properly noticed and published in Newsday. We do have representative from the applicant here, I think Paulina G. Pietro, to speak on this and answer any questions.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paulina G. Pietro with the Law Offices of Vincent J. Bezuli, Jr., PC, at two hundred Robbins Lane, Suite D One, Jericho, New York, one one seven five three, attorneys for the applicant, Beachwood Meadow East LLC. Thank you, Mr. Katz, for summarizing the application accurately. This app, the application, sorry, the applicant is requesting a reduction for the subdivision surety bond for Country Point Villas at East Meadow. As Mr. Katz said, on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, the Nassau County Planning Commission granted final subdivision approval for Country Point Villas at East Meadow. As part of the original approval, my client was required to post a surety bond in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent and to provide a cash escrow in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. Said bond was posted February twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty and a check representing the escrow, cash escrow was delivered to NCPC staff on March fourth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, my client has completed more than seventy-three percent of the work covered under this surety bond, which encompasses items such as regressing of the property, concrete paving, installation of sidewalks, curbs, storm drains, manholes, sanitary sewers, catch basins, dry wells, fencing, water supply lines, sediment, and erosion control measures. As such, my client is seeking a reduction in the bond amount from the original amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent to two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent. The site was inspected by Nassau County DPW Chief Inspector, Mr. Rodority, who issued a memo on October twentieth advising that he has received, he has reviewed all the public improvements covered under the bond and to date found no issue with reducing the bond amount as requested. Mr. Rodority also noted that the reduction amount to the two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent is more than sufficient to cover the remaining items that need to be completed. As such, I respectfully request your approval to reduce the bond amount from the nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent to the two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent. I also have Mr. Carmen with me, he is Beachwood Site Manager. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve NCPC File nineteen eighty-six dash four dash four, F dash four, for the reduction of the surety bond from the original amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent to two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and one cent. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
We have another bond reduction. This is an application to reduce the bond for NCPC File Number nineteen ninety-six F dash two. This one is map of country. Wait a second, I wanna make sure. This is a map of Country Point at East Meadow. Wait a second, I wanna make sure I'm not reading the, yeah, map of Country Point at East Meadow. Applicant is Beachwood, Beachwood East Meadow LLC. And this is an application, has been made to the Planning Commission to reduce the surety bond for the subdivision known as Map of Country Point at East Meadow. The proposed reduction in the bond is from the original amount of one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents to three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. This major subdivision consists of four point five four acres formerly a house of worship on East Meadow Avenue in the hamlet of East Meadow and includes a hundred and four age restricted units in five two and a half story buildings and a common area owned by the HOA. The Planning Commission approved the preliminary subdivision map in April, on April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The Planning Commission approved the final subdivision map on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty. The following items on the bond were deemed to be one hundred percent complete by the applicant. Grading, driveway aprons, storm drains, sanitary sewers, sanitary sewers, manholes, and sewer mains, catch basins, leaching basins, water supply, and hydrants. Nassau County Planning, Nassau County's Chief Inspector, DPW's Chief Inspector inspected the bonding items that the applicant deemed to be complete and concluded in a memo dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two that all such items had been completed to his satisfaction and that the bond should be reduced to the amount requested. There's enough money to cover the work and this was properly noticed and advertised in Newsday. And again, we have Paulina G. Pietro to answer any questions.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paulina G. Pietro with the Law Offices of Vincent J. Bezuli, PC, at offices at two hundred Robbins Lane, Suite D One, Jericho, New York, one one seven five three, attorneys for the applicant, Beachwood East Meadow LLC. Thank you again, Mr. Katz, for the accurate presentation. The applicant is requesting a reduction of the subdivision surety bond for Country Point at East Meadow condominium. On June eleventh, two thousand and twenty, Nassau County Planning Commission granted the final subdivision approval for Country Point at East Meadow condominium as part, and as part of the original approval, my client was required to post the surety bond in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents and to provide a cash escrow in the amount of four, forty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Said bond was posted on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty and a check representing the cash escrow was delivered to NCPC staff on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, my client has completed more than seventy-four percent of the work covered under this surety bond, which encompasses items such as regressing of the property, installation of storm drains, manholes, sanitary sewer mains, catch basins, dry walls, leaching basins, water supply lines, hydrants. And as such, my client is seeking a reduction in the bond amount from the original bond amount of one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents to three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. The site was inspected by Nassau County DPW Chief Inspector, Mr. Rodority, whom issued a memo on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two advising he had reviewed all the bonded public improvements to date and found no issues with reducing the bond amount as requested. Mr. Rodority also noted that the reduction amount of the three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents is more than sufficient to cover the remaining bonded items. As such, I respectfully request your approval to reduce the bond amount from one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents to three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And again, I have Mr. Carmen from Beachwood, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this? Not seeing any?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that our inspector, in addition to what was read into the record, also commented that the Beachwood was always very professional and very accommodating with all the items that had to be addressed, so it's always, it's always good to see that that's the case. There was even some items that were perhaps aesthetic, there's an image of that was not part of the bond and he passed along concerns about that and we understand that those things were also being addressed. So it's good to see that all these items are handled in such a professional manner.
We do have one handwritten comment that came to us, if you want me to read it into the record. I don't think that individual is here. We discussed it at the pre-meeting, should I?
That's it? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me read this into the record. Hello, my name is Diana. Diane, I live at one fifty-three Peters Avenue in East Meadow. My house is the second one in a dead end. The aesthetics at the end of the block has increasingly grew uglier with the white fence being the back that was put up on your, on your side has just made this mess stand out. It's bad enough this project wounds over my house and many of my neighbor's houses. They removed some of the fencing but left six sections of fencing and a dead tree behind. Since the beginning of this project, I was assured that the end of our block would look very nice with new white fence and mature trees. Yes, the fence looks beautiful, but the five sections of chain link fence, one section of stockade fence and dead tree hopefully will be removed as to make the end of my block as beautiful as this project. I've been so patient as not to be overbearing and a nuisance to the project manager associated with the final details of the project, but I've seen no change as of yet. I believe the project manager's name is, was Bill, I've tried to get in touch, blah, blah. In any case, as far as I know, this has been remedied and that section has been cleaned up and the, the chain link fencing has been removed and I think John O'Dowd, he spoke to Mr. Carmen before he left today indicating that tree would be removed today, tomorrow, so. They've been response, the applicant has been responsive.
Thank you. That's correct.
Thank you, Marty, yes. As, as Mr. Katz said, the fence was removed already and the tree is scheduled to come down either today, late as tomorrow, but it is, is in the process of being taken down.
Thank you. Commissioners, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve NCPC File nineteen ninety-six dash F dash three for the reduction of the surety bond from the original amount of one million two sixty-three, seven thirteen, oh, I'll say it better than that, one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents to three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have NCPC File fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-two. This is an application for a three lot subdivision at one forty Williamson Street, mailing address of East Rockaway, but within the unincorporated area of Bay Park in the town of Hempstead's Residential B zoning district. This is a twelve thousand four hundred and forty-seven square foot area subject property situated on the north side of Williamson, Williamson Street in the Res B zoning district. Application proposes to subdivide the property, which has about forty-six feet of frontage on Williamson Street and ninety-six feet of frontage on James Street into three separate parcels. Proposed Lot A, which has the existing home, will have forty-six point four five feet of frontage on Williamson with a depth of eighty feet, a total of five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. Proposed Lot B will have forty feet of frontage on James Street to the north with a depth of seventy feet and will be constructed as a flag lot with access to the canal for a total of three thousand and fifty-nine square feet. And proposed Lot C will have fifty-six feet of frontage on James Street, depth of sixty-five feet, total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-three square feet. The Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals unanimously denied the request for variances. For Lot A, the applicant requested subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on street line to front setback line, rear yard, use variance, and maintain two dwellings on a lesser lot. Lot B, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on street line to front setback line, lot area occupied, rear yard, and construct a dwelling with a garage. And for Lot C, subdivision of lot, lot area, lot area occupied, rear yard, and construct dwelling with garage. After the applicant's requests for variances were unanimously denied by the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals on September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, the applicant commenced a special proceeding with the Supreme Court of the State of New York pursuant to Article seventy-eight of the Civil Practice Law and Rules, seeking a judgment annuling and reversing the determinations issued by the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals, said determinations which effectively denied the applicant their requested zoning relief. By way of the judgment issued on April fourteenth of this year, the Supreme Court of the State of New York remanded the matter to the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals. remanded the matter to the Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals for the issuance of the appropriate variances. As such, by way of judgment signed August 12, 2022 by the Honorable Randy Sue Marber, Justice of the Supreme Court, State of New York, the Town of Hempstead's Board of Appeals determinations are hereby annulled and reversed, and the applicant's previously requested variances have been granted. This application was previously seen by the Planning Commission as a zoning referral during the September 10, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, where the Commission voted unanimously for the issuance of a modification. Reference in the Planning Commission's decision was the Planning Commission's desire for the composite plot plan to be modified to show off-street parking that can accommodate a minimum of two cars for each dwelling, including the two dwellings on parcel A and for each dwelling on parcel B and C. In preparation for today's hearing, the applicant has provided a composite plot plan, which clearly shows the proposed dwellings to be elevated with a one-car garage underneath. Additionally, there are outside parking areas on each parcel that can accommodate up to two cars in addition to the one-car garage, as you see there in the photo.
So just to clarify, the modification during our referral process was to modify and recommend that there be at least two, opportunity for at least two off-street parking for each.
Correct.
And, and they've included a garage and space that should be sufficient to have an additional two. So it's arguably a total of three.
Correct, yes. Yeah, being that the subject property is located within a FEMA flood zone, Town of Hempstead Building Department would not issue building permits if the proposed dwellings were not elevated, which they plan to be. Here today representing the applicant, we have Chris Brown.
Hi, good morning, Chairman, members. Christian Brown, McLaughlin and Stern, 1122 Franklin Avenue, Garden City for the applicant. You've heard the long history of this project. Here we are, hopefully at the final stages after going through back and forth at the zoning board, and there was litigation, and finally we reached a judgment. Actually, the judgment was entered on the, on the zoning board's motion. So we sort of came to a, an agreement at the end. So Mr. Hessel has covered everything here. The, the, after I spoke to staff following your pre-meeting, we clarified the issues on parking. What was represented to you is accurate. That was based upon conversations I had with the project architect to confirm that each house would have a parking pad adequate to have two cars park at each, on each site, plus each of the new dwellings will have a garage. And as you can see from the photos, this is a vacant, you know, unsightly parcel. It was part of a marina at one time. So, you know, this, this property was operating in a non-conforming fashion, which was one of the reasons why the Supreme Court ultimately overruled the zoning board's determination. So this will bring it into conformity. It's very similar to the other lots in the area. Gets rid of this, you know, overgrown area that had, I think, had been sort of an informal parking lot for the marina uses. And we will, we've addressed the parking considerations, I think. And I'll note that my client, the builder, is here in case you want to speak with him. I know Commissioner Greenfield's not here, but...
He's here in spirit, don't worry.
So, so we, we don't have the judge's rationale? And just sort of curious, so could you just elaborate a little bit further as to why the, you know, our concern was addressed, so I'm...
Yeah, I think that there were two main issues. One is that the lots that are proposed on the James Street side are very consistent with the character of James Street in total. Some of them, I think one of them is even, you know, larger than typical, the one at the end of the, at the water. And I also...
And just for the members of the public, so we can see that on the image above here, that they all look like they're in that 40-foot sort of range, which is one of the things that we deal with. Properties are different in different parts of NASA County. And when you're right by the water, many times the lots are much smaller.
And, and the other factor was that this was a non-conforming sort of jumble property with two houses on the William Street side and then this parking lot. So the court, I think, in part ruled that it was, that the zoning board hadn't fully considered the fact that we were eliminating a non-conformity and getting rid of a commercial-type use at the end of this street and replacing it with, you know, homes that were in character with the neighborhood and bringing the, bringing James Street more into, into conformity with its residential character.
And it was always understood the developer would have to lift the property up.
Of course.
Right on the water, that was never...
Of course, that was never an issue, no, no.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this case? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion. Don't all jump. Come on, Commissioners. Let's go.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for our minor subdivision on NCPC File Number 52 of 2022. And my motion is for a negative declaration and approval of the subdivision.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And thank you for bringing your client this time.
Next up, we have NCPC File 53 of 2022. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at 3235 Hempstead Turnpike, Hamlet, Levittown in the Town of Hempstead Business Zoning District. This is a 109,182-square-foot or 2.5-acre-area subject property situated on the north side of Hempstead Turnpike. Application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 350 feet of frontage on Hempstead Turnpike, into two separate parcels. Proposal lot A will have 233 feet of frontage with a depth of 272 feet, a total of 65,920 square feet or 1.5 acres, and will house the existing radiology office. Proposal lot B will have a frontage of 117 feet and be a total of 43,262 square feet or 0.993 acres and is where the proposed self-storage facility would be. Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals approved the request for variances. For lot A, you have height, maintain existing building, which is the radiology office, on a lesser lot. Reconfigure parking lot with insufficient maneuvering aisle and access driveway width for two-way traffic. For lot B, you have a special exception for proposed self-storage facility. Wave off-street parking with insufficient maneuvering aisle and access driveway width for two-way traffic on a lesser lot. This case was previously seen by the Planning Commission as a zoning referral. The first time was at the May 19, 2022 hearing, where the Planning Commission voted unanimously to deem the application incomplete. At the time, the Planning Commission requested the following information: a traffic parking analysis, information regarding a shared access agreement, elevations for the proposed self-storage facility, and a visual simulation of the view from the rear yards of the homes abutting the property in order to determine the visual impact of the proposed self-storage facility on the neighbors nearby. The case was then brought back a second time on September 8 of this year, where the Planning Commission issued a local determination. It should be noted that the proposed project was downsized from the initial submission on May 19, 2022. Since that time, the applicant has provided renderings of the downsized self-storage facility, which show that the building will only be two stories tall with a height of 30 feet. The proposed height of 30 feet is 10 feet shorter than the existing radiology office, which stands at 40 feet, 40 feet tall. Here today representing the applicant is Christian Brown.
Welcome back, Mr. Brown.
Good morning again, Christian Brown, McLaughlin and Stern, 1122 Franklin Avenue, Garden City. Yes, this project was approved at the zoning board after taking into consideration this body's recommendation and some other thoughts about the viability of the original proposal. The project was, the height of the building, proposed building was lowered to be zoning compliant. It eliminated the third story. It eliminated the height variance. I think you've been provided with a copy of the cross-access agreement. So that bit about the maneuvering goes away because there'll be a shared driveway that's legal, of legal width. That, the zoning board imposed that as a condition of its grant. We drafted and submitted a cross-access agreement, which will be recorded if this body approves the subdivision once we have new lot numbers of record. The lots themselves are zoning compliant. There's no, there are no variances related to the size of the properties. They're legal in the business zone. It's just a matter, it was a matter of basically the special use for the self-storage facility because we eliminated most of the area variance issues by lowering the height of the building. There will be landscaping provided here. That's all been addressed at the town level and is incorporated into the zoning board's requirements. So what we're seeking here is obviously permission to divide the property, create new tax lots. Then we will file the appropriate cross-access agreements, and the project can move forward from there.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, have you seen a copy of the cross-access agreement?
I don't know if it was in the package that we submitted, but we draft, we have one. It was provided to the town. It simply says that they'll share the driveway access so that, you know, it's a common driveway between the two lots. I can provide a copy to you.
In, in, in the, in the past, the Commission has approved it's subject to my, my review and approval of the cross-access agreement. So if you're, I have no problem...
That's where I was going. Okay, thank you.
And again, that, that, we, in order to get a building permit, we'll have to have that recorded because it's one of the conditions in the zoning board approval.
Okay, and you'll pass it on to counsel?
But I'll, I'll give it to Mr. O'Brien, yes, no problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's worth just pointing out that the last item on our, for the sake of our members of the public that are here, for the last item that we handle on our calendars is the zoning referrals. And the zoning referrals, two actions, two, two of these, this item and the item before, are examples of situations where an item can come to us both in the zoning referral calendar, but it can also come to us in the subdivision calendar where we have original jurisdiction. And what that means is that in the zoning referrals, we're, we're given a referral. The final say is at the local town or village. But many times, we are able to raise some concerns with a project at a little bit earlier step in the process. And as we see with two of these now, the project, in my opinion, was approved, improved, made better, is what I'm saying, after the Planning Commission referral concerns were raised and presented and addressed. And, and so just wanted to sort of highlight that aspect of our process here. When it gets to us on our subdivision calendar, we could see that something was improved rather than us being in a situation where it might have been a tougher vote for us. You know, two cases here where items that we raised were addressed, and that's a good thing to see with the actions coming before us.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this item? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the subdivision of NCPC File Number 53-2022 with the negative deck, subject to the shared access agreement.
Approved by counsel.
And approved by counsel.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, we have NCPC File 54 of 2022. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at 329 and 335 Evans Avenue in the Hamlet, Elmont, in the Town of Hempstead's Residential C zoning district. This is an 8,320-square-foot area subject property situated on the east side of Evans Avenue. Application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 104 feet of frontage on Evans, into two equal parcels. Both lot A and lot B will have 52 feet of frontage on Evans Avenue with a depth of 80 feet and will be a total of 4,160 square feet. Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals has approved the request for variances. For lot A, you had subdivision of lot, lot area, rear yard, and construct dwelling with garage. And for lot B, subdivision of lot, lot area, rear yard, construct dwelling with garage, and demolish the existing dwelling and garage. The applicant went through the proper process with the Town of Hempstead, and the building permits were mistakenly issued before coming before this body. The deeds that are filed in the county clerk's office reference the two separate lots already. You can see there, the new home has been built on lot A to the left. Essentially, the applicant went to the assessment office to reapportion the taxes, and that is why they are here today for approval from the Planning Commission. Here today representing the applicant, we have John Armentano of Farrell Fritz.
Good morning, Mr. Armentano. Welcome back.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Long-term OC.
Exactly right. John Armentano, Farrell Fritz, 100 Motor Parkway, Hopock, New York. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is a little bit of an interesting one. As you heard, the discussion, the applicants, and I have a booklet just to give you a little bit of the history, but I think it was well said, you know, the property has been, the two homes have been constructed. The property went through the, the proper course with the zoning board. My applicant, the applicant, who is the widow of the estate, the widow of the owner, he purchased the property, received the zoning decision, that's Exhibit 5. Unbeknownst to him of the requirement to come to this board, he then submitted to the town. The town then issued him a building permit, which is Exhibit 6. The homes were constructed. Exhibit 7 was the, was the sale of the newly constructed home to the new owner, and that deed was recorded, interestingly enough. And then Exhibit 8 does show you the newly constructed home on parcel A and the existing home on parcel B. They are in keeping with the community character. We are here to receive your approval for the subdivision so that the deeds can be, the subsequent deed can be filed for parcel A. And that's a requirement, as you know, for the county clerk to have your approval.
So let me ask you something. The owner, did he do this on his own or did he have counsel representing him?
He did not at the time have counsel. That's, I think, part of the problem.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Well, what's interesting is we've had cases where everything was done properly and the clerk rejected filing the deed, and the applicant has to come back to us to get time to extend the filing of the deeds because they have to sort of resubmit, and they present to us that there really was no reason that they understood for why it was rejected and, you know. But here's a case where it should have been rejected by the clerk because it had not gone through subdivision approval. And again, for the point that I made earlier about our role with zoning versus referrals versus our original jurisdiction on the subdivision. If you were in Suffolk County, this would have been different. It would be sufficient that it was approved by the town. But here in NASA County, there is this requirement to come to us. So, you know, I always wonder when we get one where it was approved and they didn't go before us properly or come before us properly. Is it a case where, you know, there might have been the likelihood of denial? And now it's sort of like, we really can't deny it. The house is built. How could we possibly say no? You know, so there's always this sort of concern that it's one of those sort of, you know, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than approval. And, you know, so, so the factual background that you gave involving, you know, someone that passed away and then, and so, you know, the sale of the property that was done without the benefit of counsel. So, you know, some of those details do help to show us that it wasn't any ill intent to get around our approval process. Also, looking at the property and seeing the details, it doesn't seem like there's any reason why it would have been denied if it had been brought to us properly.
Right, I think that part of the issue also was the town issuing the building permit, and they built it, and that just set up a chain reaction they were here to fix.
That's something we deal with constantly.
I'm sure.
You know, this was, if you look, this was 2018 when we've had a number of cases come back to us where things, for one of the terms, slipped through the cracks over with the building department, which is, as we've all agreed, is taking a much stronger, firmer stance nowadays, so this is just.
They also had a lot of change at that point.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this case? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the subdivision of NCPC File Number 54-2022 with the negative deck.
All those in favor?
Thank you, nice to see you.
Take care, good seeing you.
Next up is NCPC File 55 of 2022. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at 2116 Center Avenue, Belmore, New York. It's a 14,050-square-foot area, subject properties situated on the southwest corner of Center Avenue and Wilson Avenue in the Hamlet of Belmore, in the Town of Hempstead's Residential B Zoning District. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 125 feet of frontage on Center Avenue and 109.8 feet of frontage on Wilson Avenue into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 109.81 feet of frontage on Wilson Avenue with a depth of 65 feet and be a total of 7,225 square feet. Proposed Lot B will have 60 feet of frontage on Center Avenue with a depth of 115 feet for a total of 6,825 square feet. Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicant, we have Howard Avertine of Avertine and Associates.
Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning.
Name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertine, 2116 Merrick Avenue in Merrick. Mr. Hessel, as usual, presented a very comprehensive explanation of the application. I'll just amplify a couple of points. Both proposed parcels are fully zoning compliant. We exceed Lot Area. We comply with all required setbacks. We're below the maximum lot coverage on each lot. And essentially, the parcels are proposed to be developed with two new colonial-style single-family homes. There are ample setbacks from all surrounding properties, and unless the board has any questions, I suspect there are some folks here who want to be heard, and I would appreciate an opportunity to respond after you hear the comments.
Thank you. Commissioners, before I ask anybody in the public, does anybody have any questions, comments you want to bring up?
Well, just to clarify, so any action that comes before us, we need to get a letter from the town to confirm that it's zoning compliant. So sometimes this statement is made that a project is zoning compliant can mean one of two things. Either that it's compliant just straight up in, being consistent with the zoning code for the property, or it could sometimes be the same terminology thrown around when a variance was issued, because what they're saying is the variance has been issued, so now, after issuing the variance, it's essentially zoning compliant. In this case, just for clarification purposes, was there any request for or need for variances, or was this fully zoning compliant straight up?
Fully zoning compliant, no requests for variances. All setbacks are satisfied. As I indicated, Lot Area, Lot Width, all compliant, as well as height and lot coverage, everything, fully, fully compliant in every respect.
Thank you. We have three people that wish to be heard. Just so you know, speakers, you're given three minutes to plead your case. Please keep it short and get to the point, and please try not to repeat yourself. Christine Padula, name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Christine Padula.
Good morning.
You can hear me okay? Great. So my name is Christine Padula. I've lived in the Belmore Village area, which, where this home is located, for 16 years. Originally, my husband and I lived around the corner on Linden Street, and it was just two houses in from the village. We loved living walking distance from the town, but between the local business patrons and living next door to a multiple family home, it became overcrowded, and we couldn't even park in front of our own home. We wanted to move. It was important to stay in the area because I love the charm of Belmore Village community. So four years ago, we moved to Wilson Avenue, 2594 Wilson, which is directly next door to the historic 2116 Center Avenue. Our plot of land is right there to the left of that, right there. So now we're a whole block up from Belmore Village. There is no overcrowding in our area, and the property line on the east side of my house is actually runs along the whole backyard of 2116 Center. From what I can see in the plans, there will now be two potential plots and yards that will back up to the side of my home and will provide my family with limited privacy. Plot A's proposed driveway will be just a few feet away from the corner bus stop on Wilson and Center, which is the bus stop to three local schools. Plot B is going to create a driveway on Center Avenue, and there are currently no driveways on the west side of Center, between Wilson and Grand Avenue, which is actually the key to alleviating a lot of congestion on that block. Center's a very busy block. And honestly, if you were to look, you would see that nobody ever parks on that side of Center, just because you're not able to get buses through and different traffic lines. We live in Nassau County. It's not Queens. I'm not paying Nassau County taxes to have multiple homes be built right on top of my home. When 2116 Center was placed on the market, I had local residents who knocked on my door inquiring about the home, telling me that they put offers on the home, they wanted to live there, and they wanted to restore it back to its original beauty. I recognize it needs a little TLC, but it's not a home that needs to be condemned, knocked down, and put to subdivisions. When does it end? When does Nassau County decide to stop subdividing lots that don't in fact really need to be knocked down and condemned? I can only hope that you will listen to the residents of Belmore, myself, and some of my neighbors that are here, and that public opinion will be considered today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert Quinn, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Robert Quinn, 403 Center Avenue, Belmore. Commissioner and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, Belmore has a sign in town that says, "Stroll Down Memory Lane." And Center Avenue in particular, from Merrick Avenue, south of Sunrise, to Linden Street, north of Sunrise, every home there is unique. Most of them are 100 years or older. My house was built in 1923, a beautiful brick colonial. You want to now tear down a brick colonial. You've already subdivided a lot on Center between Grand Avenue and Frederick. A house, at least you didn't tear down a house there, but that lot built a brand-new house. Doesn't fit, in my opinion, the character of Center Avenue. So clearly, it seems that this house technically, this property technically fits with all the legal requirements, but it doesn't fit Belmore community requirements, and I hope that you deny this request.
Thank you. Christine Keller, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christine Keller. I live at 404 Center Avenue, Belmore, New York, 11710. Myself, my husband, and our two children live two houses away from the house in question to 116 Center Avenue, the Lawrence Graber House. And I'd like to read a statement in opposition. We moved to Belmore Village similar to our neighbors due to the historic nature and architectural character of the community. I'm an adjunct professor also at SUNY Old Westbury in the History and Philosophy Department and involved in valuing and researching local Long Island history. Many parcels of property with historic houses that have architectural features no longer found today are in jeopardy of being demolished by developers. Today, again, we're speaking about the Lawrence Graber House at 2116 Center Avenue, Belmore, where developers are planning to tear down the house and build two in its place that do not fit in with this community. Center Avenue is next, is the street next to Belmore Village, where, as my neighbor Bob said, "A Walk Down Memory Lane" is posted on a sign above the train station to highlight what the community means to those living here and what we are trying to preserve. Demolishing the Lawrence House will impact all of us, and I'd like to read a few reasons why we're in opposition. This subdivision will impede on the preservation of local history and the character of the Belmore community. We are to maintain, we need to maintain our community theme of "Walk Down Memory Lane." We need to save one of the oldest architecturally distinct houses in Frederick Park, Belmore Village. We have therefore submitted an application for landmark designation with the Town of Hempstead, and I can provide you with an attached document. We also need to prevent overcrowding on Center Avenue. Also, as neighbors have mentioned, the Lawrence Graber House and the house next door both have garages and driveways that face the side streets, leaving Center Avenue free of congestion. On other parts of the block, it's difficulty for cars to park, and if two houses are placed there, one driver will be adding to this section of Center Avenue and one on Wilson. This is an already busy intersection where children wait on the bus stop and have, and will have traffic issues and the congestion making this more difficult for cars to park and for buses to pass, and accidents are likely to occur. Parking will also pose a problem, and if this multiple, if multiple people live in these dwellings, which is possible based on the plans, the above will be compounded. Our historic village, its character and architecture, as well as the legacy of their people, need to be protected, ensuring that the ambiance that exists in Frederick Park, Belmore Village is preserved for current and future generations. So we hope you consider the technical and the logistical issues as well as the historical significance.
Thank you very much.
I also have a petition of over 200 community members who have signed this, who are in opposition of this build, as well as comments by some of them I'd like to submit on the record.
Very good. John, do you want to get the petition? And Commissioner Warren?
When, when was your landmark application filed with the town?
It was filed, it was filed on the 14th.
The 14th of this month.
Yes. And the landmark's hearing is on the 29th.
And when was the household?
I'm sorry?
When was the house sold to the developer?
July.
So between now and then, were you guys organizing?
Yes, we were organizing, and community members were trying to purchase the home before we could even work out something else with.
And, and, and then what took so much time to put in the application for the?
I guess learning that the developer had purchased it. We didn't realize that someone purchased it in July.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, there is, there is, there is another case that I know that came before us where they did get the historical designation, and, you know, it's, it's always tough when these special homes are taken down, but.
Yeah, and there are community members interested in purchase, so that's the interesting thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Maria Cucarillo, 2090 Center Avenue, Belmore. I live three houses down from this house, this gorgeous house that I never thought anybody would think of tearing down. It's not in ruins, it's absolutely gorgeous. Oh my God, I think I'm going to cry. Excuse me. You know, it's like nothing's sacred anymore, you know? Just tear down everything and just let everything become a memory, right? They've said it. It's a, it's Memory Lane. This house takes up half a block. It's gorgeous. The landscaping, everything, okay? You're going to remove a major part of our community, okay? Changing the whole atmosphere. It doesn't fit. It may fit for some of you, you know, and it's, you know, nice money-making, but it does not fit our community, okay? We're very small, our street is very small, there's a parking issue. The streets are very small. If you have people parking on both sides, it's difficult to get down the street. Sometimes I have to back out of my driveway, I worry about banging into the guy that lives across the street. It doesn't fit Belmore. We are trying to maintain our beautiful community, all right? The old community, all right? It's sacred to us. This house has been there way before I was even born. I mean, that's all I remember. I went to Dr. Graber, I knew Dr. Lawrence. I mean, it's, this house is a major part of our little community. And two new houses just do not fit, and it's going to be unsafe. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Counsel, counselor, you want to come up and make any of your comments? Oh, sorry. I didn't see you over there. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Melissa Moran, 114 Frederick Avenue, Belmore, New York, 11710. I was one of the prospective purchasers of this property. I know that there were numerous offers, at least seven in all cash. I wish mine was one of them. This property is under historical landmark review or application. I did want to point out that as far as there being a delay from when it was sold to when the application was made, I know that there had been representations by the buyers that there would be no changes made to the house, and that was very important to the owners, who were three sons, both their parents, they resided there with their parents, and both of them are now deceased. I know that it was important to the sons to maintain the house as is. As far as the bus stops, I live right around the corner, and I pick up my nieces and nephews. It is a very busy block. It would be hazardous to have driveways on Center Avenue. It is very important now that there are none in that area, and I just ask that this motion be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
First point I'd like to address is the historical nature of the property. I have a copy of the certificate search sheet from the Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings. It indicates that the home was built in 1938, and it also indicates that there were several modifications to the home subsequently. Apparently, there was a doctor's office in the home for many, many years, and there was a building permit from 1976 for alterations. Also, there was apparently removal of an illegal kitchen. There must have been a, an illegal apartment in the home at one point, this was certainly prior to the time the applicant purchased the property. So, and in 1976, there was a rear extension constructed. So this property, like many, many others, was built in the 1930s, and over the years had renovations to it, permits were issued, in some instances, permits weren't issued and then were obtained subsequently. So I'll submit a copy of the search sheet for the record, if I may.
Counsel, do you have a response to the assertion that there was a misrepresentation during the sale of the house where there was promises made that the property would not be?
I spoke to my client, he's here too, and he can speak to the commission if you'd like. No such statement was made by my client as the ultimate purchaser. I can't say what someone, some other potential purchaser might have said, but the principal of Capstone Homes, who is here, indicated that no such statement was made. I'd also like to address the, the way the homes, a lot of thought was give, was put into the manner in which these parcels would be developed. The, for instance, regarding the Padula residents abutting the subject property to its west, there's an existing detached garage which is much, much closer to the westerly property line of the subject property than the proposed new home, which will be facing Wilson Avenue is. So the proposed new home is almost 36 feet setback. That's a significant setback and certainly fully zoning compliant as far as setback requirements. In addition, we were careful to make sure that there was a curb cut on, for the home on, on two respective streets, not on the same street. So the plan that is before the commission indicates that there's an existing apron and curb cut to be removed, and then a proposed new curb cut, so that will accommodate a double width driveway, and there's a single-car garage interior attached. width driveway, and there's a single car garage, interior attached garage. So you'll have, with respect to the parcel facing Wilson Avenue, onsite off-street parking for a minimum of three vehicles, and the same thing with the other parcel. One car interior garage, double width driveway to accommodate two additional vehicles. The Town of Hempstead controls curb cut permits on both Center Avenue and Wilson Avenue, which are town roads, and my client has been in contact with the Department of Highways and the Building Department, there's going to be no issue with respect to those proposed new curb cuts and accessways. So, the, the thrust of what I'm hearing from the folks from the community is that they prefer to see this house remain, and they are, are like so many others throughout the county, and the commission has heard many, many of these types of cases and heard many folks speak, and change is a difficult concept to a lot of people, they resist it as best as they can, and I, I can appreciate those sentiments. However, this property owner has property rights, as the commission is aware, this is a zoning compliant proposal, he has the absolute right to demolish the structure, even if he wasn't going to build two homes. He could build one home, whatever he would want to do. There's no obligation that he maintain it, and so the proposal is, is appropriate, whatever the town may ultimately do on the application that we were advised was filed, that, you know, is, is an issue for a different day. But as far as approving the proposed subdivision of this property, we respectfully submit that there's no legal impediment to the board, to the commission, I should say, issuing the approval, and there is, there is really no basis to not approve it, other than the fact that the folks here simply don't want to see that happen, and that, I respectfully submit, is not sufficient in that regard.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session for advice of counsel. Here, second?
Second.
In favor?
Second.
Okay, commissioners, we'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we're in the position to act on the proposal, and we have a concern raised by the community as to the community character and the impact of the proposed action in light of the arguments that the house in question represents a home of historical significance. We were informed by the members of the community during this public hearing that an application has been made to the town to try and seek a designation for historical significance. It seems prudent that if a request such as that has been made and that a hearing date has been set, that it would be reasonable to allow that hearing to take place before we were to, to vote on the application. And therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this item to our next meeting to allow time to see what, if anything, the town does in response to the application that's before them. So my motion is for a adjournment.
To December 15th?
December 15th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. And counsel, do you want to?
Just, just want to add, you know, this, so the members of the community came, came out, you know, the board listened to your concerns, this is not gonna go on and on and on, you know, one of the things, you know, that may happen is, is the, if it goes before the commission on the 29th, they may not act. Well, that's, you know, that ship has then sailed, because I don't speak for the commissions what they decide to vote, I'm just the legal counsel, but this commission does not carry cases for long periods of time, and I would respect, I, I would expect at the next meeting, and I'd also expect that we probably will have a full board of all nine commissioners, that, that this will be voted on one, one way or the other. So just, just be prepared, you know, the board did, the commissioners did give you, you know, a little bit of time, and hopefully you, you can use it well.
Did you have a question for me, Mr.? No more questions. Motion's been made and seconded and approved for the adjournment. Thank you all for coming.
Next up, we have NCPC File 56 of 2022. This is an application for a three-lot subdivision at 340 Bayview Avenue, Hamlet of Inwood, Town of Hempstead Residential B and Business Zoning District. This is a 14,207 square foot area subject property situated on the northwest corner of Bayview Avenue and Jeanette Avenue, Hamlet of Inwood, Town of Hempstead Res B and Business Zoning District. Application proposes subdivide the property, which has 92 feet of frontage on Bayview Avenue and 140 feet of frontage on Jeanette Avenue into three separate parcels. Proposed Lot A, which has the existing home, will have 44 feet of frontage on Bayview Avenue by 92 feet, be a total of 4,627 square feet. Proposed Lot B to the west will have 48 feet of frontage on Bayview Avenue, for a total of 4,546 square feet, and Proposed Lot C to the north with frontage of 58 feet on Jeanette Avenue will have a total of 5,033 square feet. Town of Hempstead Board of Appeals approved the request for variances. For Lot A, subdivision of lot, lot area, and maintain the dwelling on a lesser lot. For Lot B, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from an on-street line to front setback line, height and construct the dwelling. And then for Lot C, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from an on-street line to front setback line, lot area occupied, height and construct the dwelling. Here today representing the applicant, we have Dominic Minerva of Minerva in DiAgostino.
Mr. DiAgostino.
Al DiAgostino.
You don't look like Dominic Minerva.
Contrary to popular belief, I'm still above ground. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As.
Hold on, name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, well, I was about to do that.
Okay.
As, as Mr. Hessel referred to, my firm, Minerva and DiAgostino PC, represents the applicant with respect to this, this application. My name, of course, is Albert DiAgostino, 107 South Central Avenue, Valley Stream, New York, 11580. This application originally went before the zoning board of appeals and was approved substantially in the same form as you have before you back in 2015. The, the owner at that time let the approvals lapse. We went back to the board in the, the earlier part of this year, and the board substantially re-approved the same application with the, the same building plans that were, were submitted. The current lot, as Mr. Hessel referred to, is 14,407 plus square feet in area, which is about 100 and, I'm sorry, 240% of the required lot area. In the zone, the property is, is partially in the business zone, which permits single-family residences on a lot conforming with the requirements of the residency zone and partially in the Residence B zone. The existing dwelling is a non-conforming two-family house pursuant to the conditions imposed by the zoning board of appeals. The occupancy of that home will be reduced to a single-family residence, and that home will be, will be maintained, improved and maintained on the reduced lot, and two new homes will be, will be built. The subject property is on the northwest corner of Bayview Avenue and Jeanette Avenue. The Inwood Urban Renewal Zone also runs through the middle of Bayview Avenue, and we are just to the north of it, we're across the street from the Town of Hempstead Housing Authority Development. I would respectfully submit that what is being proposed, which is now zoning compliant as varied, will result in a, an improvement of the subject property. If there are any questions that you might have, I'd be happy to try to respond to them. And if not, I, I would reserve my right to respond to any comments of, of any, any people in the audience who might wish to be heard, heard on this application.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
It's, it's interesting looking at the image of the home from the bird's eye view that we have up there, that it was situated so that it's, it's almost as if the, years ago when it was built, they anticipated a possible subdivision because the.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
It's almost as if they anticipated a possible subdivision because the property is situated on one half of the, of the lot, leaving the other half. It is not an old filed map. Otherwise, I would have referred to it. That, that's the, the manner in which Inwood was, was developed 100 years ago. I'm not sure of the exact date, but it was somewhere after 1900 that Inwood came back into the county of Nassau, it was originally part of incorporated in, in Greater New York as of January 1, 1899, and some of the development in the area is, is not planned in a similar manner as the rest of Nassau County. I don't know if that answers the question or is just.
Well, the point is, you, you plan to keep the building, the home that's there, you're not, you're not gonna tear down, but you are gonna, I, I forget the word you used, refurbish it, or, or there will be work done and so that it would be clearly a single-family home on that, in that spot.
Yes. That, that's one of the conditions of the zoning board. Not seeing any? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Come up and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alyssa Evans. I live at 99 Jeanette Avenue, Inwood, and Inwood. All right, my house is to the right, to the left of that property, and in the back is another development also in the back of me, so my question is, with them building and they building, what is that gonna do to the damage of my property? I have everybody on back of me, front on, on the end of lot of 340 Bayview, so if my foundation and stuff start cracking and stuff like that, what is that gonna do for me? When they start building these houses, because I got two people building in the back of me, one in the back, and now John.
Okay, I'll just ask Mr. DiAgostino if he can answer that.
You have a right to be assured that when the, assuming that this is approved, that when the new home is built, that no harm is done to your property, so, you know, you certainly have a right to, you know, raise that concern and, but it's, you know, part of what we could do is try and make sure that there's some communication so that you maybe have a, a contact number for the builder, so that if you do identify a concern, you would be able to contact the builder, perhaps the attorney can help us with that. But, you know, nothing should happen to your home during this, during this construction.
Also, my block, it is congested. I have a stop sign where one of the houses is gonna be built, a stop, it's full stop sign within a couple feet of my house. So now, they double parking now, sometime I have a hard time getting out of my driveway, so that need to be concerned too, because they saying no parking, but people park there every single night and every day.
On, on that point, we can ask for some assurances that the work that's gonna be done here, that the new home will have what's called off-street parking, meaning that they can park in driveway and perhaps a garage, so that there's less of a need for the new home to be adding to the problem in terms of parking on the street. So we could ask about off-street parking from the council. You know, sometimes the new developments are actually better in that respect because the older properties don't have, they either have no garage at all, and they may have just a skinny parking driveway, so they can only get like one car in. Many homes have more than one car these days, so that, that contributes more to the cars on the street than would be the case perhaps with a new development, where they can plan it better to have more off-street parking. So we could ask the attorney about that, and we could also ask. So we could ask the attorney about that, and we could also ask him about your first question of whether perhaps you could have a contact number or something for the builder so that during the building phase, there's no damage done to your property during the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we had met at the zoning board hearing and had a similar discussion. I will arrange to get a contact number. I'll ask for a contact number as well. Now, I know there's a reference to two developments, and ours is simply to maintain an existing residence on a reduced size lot as varied and to construct two new single-family residences. I know when I spoke with the neighbor at the zoning board meeting, she made reference to a multifamily project which we have nothing to do with. I don't know if it's going forward or not going forward, but clearly the neighbors are entitled to have their property protected. And if there are any issues that come up in the construction of these three homes, that the builder can be contacted and those issues can be addressed. In terms of the off-street parking, that was addressed by the zoning board both back in 2015, when the variances were originally granted, and again this year when they were in effect readopted. So there is off-site off-street parking which is provided and in accordance with the plans which were submitted and specifically approved by the zoning board of appeals. And there's full recognition of the issues in terms of traffic which exists throughout the county. And again, what we're doing is we're reducing a two-family to a one-family and building two new two-families, so we're increasing in effect by one-family.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard on this?
Just confirming, so you're building two new single-family homes.
Yes, we're building, we're building two new single-family homes, and the existing home, which is a legal, non-conforming, two-family home, is being reduced to a single-family home, and that's a specific condition that was imposed by the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the subdivision of NCPC file number 56-2022 with a negative deck.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Neighbor that's in the back, if you do have any problems, my suggestion is that you call the Town of Hempstead Building Department, and they will come out and take a look. Okay, Greg, next.
Last, we have NCPC file two of 2020. This was an application for a three-lot subdivision at 1678 Logan Street, Hamlet of North Belmore, Town of Hempstead Residential B Zoning District. This is a 19,063-square-foot area subject property on the west side of Logan Street. Application proposed to subdivide the property, which had 180 feet of frontage on Logan, into three separate parcels. Lot A was 55 feet of frontage and 6,164 square feet. Lot B was 57 feet of frontage and 6,073 square feet. And lot C was 68 feet of frontage and a total of 6,825 square feet. Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings issued a letter of zoning compliance signed on October 10th of 2019 for the proposed subdivision, and the application was considered as of right. This application was previously approved at the January 9, 2020 Nassau County Planning Commission hearing, and the resolution was signed February 20th of 2020. As the resolution expired on February 20th of 2021, the case is being heard again in order for the applicant to obtain a new valid resolution and then subsequently file the appropriate deeds in the county clerk's office. There is the existing home on lot A, and two new homes have been built on lots B and C. Here today representing the applicant, we have Christian Brown of McLaughlin and Stern.
Good morning again, Christian Brown, McLaughlin and Stern, 1122 Franklin Avenue, Garden City, for the applicant. As Mr. Hessel notes, this case was previously approved. After it was approved, the applicant was, I believe what happened was the applicant was trying to sell one of the homes very shortly after the approval, and there was a rush, 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 so the file was taken from my office and given to other folks. And not perfect, but I think these others maybe didn't understand how you have to file subdivision deeds in Nassau County, and so I think deeds might have been filed by the title company but were filed in the wrong section of the clerk's office. I've had this happen before. If they don't go through the proper department, they never get properly recorded, and the apportionment is not done. And that apparently is what happened here. So what we're basically asking to do is issue a new resolution so that we can properly record the deeds, which my office would handle at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners?
There's no changes from the original application?
No, just that the deeds weren't properly filed. They never showed up in the system. Apportionment was never done. So now it's come to light that that has to be corrected, obviously. Otherwise, there's no change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of file, NCPC file 22 of 2020 with a negative declaration.
Second. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving along to an extension of time application. This is NCPC file 48 of 2021, a two-lot subdivision at 250 Clocks Boulevard, Hamlet of East Massapequa, Town of Oyster Bay, R110 Zoning District. It was a 67,826-square-foot area subject property that was subdivided. Lot A was 40,663 square feet, and lot B was 27,163 square feet. Town of Oyster Bay Zoning Board of Appeals approved the request for variances on lot A, and then lot B was considered zoning compliant. The application was originally heard at the September 9, 2021 Planning Commission hearing and was thereafter approved on September 21st of 2021. So for us today for an extension of time to file the deeds, resolution was initially signed on October 21st and was set to expire after 12 months on October 21st of this year. If approved, the new date to file the deeds will be extended an additional six months, and the applicant will have until April 21st, 2023, to file the appropriate deeds in the county clerk's office. Here today representing the applicant, we have Howard Avertine of Avertine and Associates.
Good morning again. Appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertine, 2116 Merrick Avenue, Merrick. As Mr. Hessel indicated, this application was approved and the approval resolution certified on October 21, 2021. Separate deeds for the two lots created were submitted to the county clerk for filing on October 3, 2021, obviously prior, excuse me, 2022, prior to the one-year expiration, but were rejected based upon an issue that the county clerk raised regarding the legal description in the deeds and as it compared to the legal meets and bounds set forth on the surveys. So that issue was addressed. Revised surveys were prepared, and they'll match the deeds identically. I'll request Mr. Hessel to take the revised composite maps, assuming the commission grants the extension of time so that he can stamp them, because if we try to use the old ones with the new description, they'll reject them again, I suspect. So we don't want that to happen. So we would request the extension of time in order to submit the corrected deeds with the corrected maps.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Anybody in the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I will ask for a motion. Don't all jump at once.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion on NCPC file, minus subdivision file 48 of 2021, that we approve the extension of time to file the deeds for this minus subdivision.
April 21st, 2023. Correct, councilor?
2023, no?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said 2022. Losing my mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Marty, let's, Marty should be...
Yes.
Before you get down, I wanted to say there will be different... Okay. I'd like to take, well, first of all, commissioners, does anybody have any questions on the LDs? We've heard two earlier at the pre-meeting. I don't think it's necessary to go through a whole long dissertation on them. I'd like to have a motion on agenda item one, two, and four for an LD, and then we'll talk about the rest.
Okay.
And this way we can get everybody...
Okay, so for agenda items one, two, and four, I make a motion for local determination or LD.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, do we have any questions on three, NCPC agenda item three, five, six, eight, 10, or 11? Three, five, six, eight, okay, 11. Not seeing any questions? Commissioners, I would take a motion for those LDs. So we need a motion on agenda items three, five, six, eight, 10, and 11.
Okay, I'll make the motion for local determination or LD on agenda items three, five, six, eight, 10, and 11.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, Marty?
Yeah.
Go with number seven, and then we'll do nine.
Okay. Item number seven, this is NCPC case number 1031322. This is in Rockville Center. It's for heightened parking variances. This is a conversion and expansion of a vacant five-story hotel to a self-storage facility on a 25,240-square-foot subject property. To the north, a fronting on Sunrise Highway is a gas station. To the west, across Ocean Avenue, a one-story office building in a three-story RVC Rockville Center Hotel. To the east is the Rockville Center Highway Department Facility. To the south is a vacant parcel and homes. The applicant proposes to add two stories for a total of seven stories and a height of 66 feet, which is 20 feet taller than the existing vacant hotel. In addition, the building will be expanded onto what is currently paved area that was used for parking for the hotel. Facility will be a total, the self-storage facility will be a total of 147,600 square feet. Excessive height and insufficient parking. The following variances are required: insufficient parking, 148 spaces required, nine spaces provided. This parking requirement is based on a minimum of one space per thousand square feet. That's in the Village Code. Also excessive height, maximum building height of three stories and 36 feet permitted. Seven stories, 66 feet proposed in that business district. Staff is opinion of this is to recommend a denial. The project represents an extreme deviation from the standards of the zoning code for required height in particular, and may establish a precedent for other such excessively tall structures within the building. So the existing hotel is five stories and obviously is a, is non-conforming. And to add two more stories, seven stories to meet, from my perspective is excessive. And for the record, can I, you remember a while back, we saw the self-storage facility on Sunrise Highway, which is the former furniture shop? It so happens the, we recommended LD with a letter that addressed, you know, parking, that cars don't park there and whatnot. But my concern was, I had a concern about excessive height. It so happens that project has been scaled down a couple, a story or two, just to let you know. So I'm a little concerned about the height of this particular building.
Sounds like we just have too much stuff. I mean, we're talking about seven stories for self-storage. It's just extraordinary that there's a belief that there's a need for that, not to mention it would be, you know, essentially a windowless building, you know, imposed on the landscape.
And they're going to, not only, you know, they're going to expand the existing building, the existing hotel, from its current footprint to what is now paved parking area. So on top of that, to add two more stories to me, that could, it may be somewhat problematic.
It's also double the size.
Yeah.
It's what's allowed, and they want, what, 66?
Yeah, well, it's actually 20 feet, 20 feet tall than in the existing hotel.
Yeah.
But the zoning code...
Marty, I think you're right on target with this one.
Okay.
Commissioners? Anybody want to make a motion? For denial?
Motion on NCPC case number 1031322, 415 Ocean Avenue, LLC Rockville Center, to, for a denial of zoning referral, on the zoning referral.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Okay, Marty, last but not least.
Okay, this is item number nine, NCPC case number 114322. This is Town of Hempstead, Hamlet of East Meadow, and this is actually the business X zone. Inadvertently left that out. This is the construction of a commercial building to be used as a market, unspecified market of over 44,000 square feet, as what of what was previously the Home Depot property along Hempstead Turnpike in East Meadow. The easterly half of the Home Depot property was recently developed as a CarMax facility. The westly half of the property has been cleared and will be used for the proposed market. All existing access to the entire property will be maintained at a signalized intersection at Hempstead Turnpike. Parking variance is required with a total of 477 spaces required for the three buildings on the subject property with 325 spaces provided. The proposed market requires 223 spaces. It should be noted that there was about 75 spaces provided along Marginal Road of Hempstead Turnpike that may be utilized by the proposed market, but are not counted as part of the parking supply. If these spaces were added, there would be about 400 spaces. A conversation with the applicant's attorney, Bill Benesso, actually, indicated that the patrons of the market would have access to spaces along the marginal road along Hempstead Turnpike. But the attorney stated that a parking and traffic information is currently being gathered by a consultant with a report that will be... made, made, made available in the near future to the town. I, I think, I wouldn't mind getting that report, deeming this incomplete at this point in time. It's a pretty crowded area there, and it may or may not be problematic, but I, I, I would like to see the, the preparation of that parking traffic analysis.
No worries. Motion on MPC number 114222, Salisbury Partners LLC, Town Hempstead, East Meadow, for, to deem the application incomplete. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving along to an extension of time application. This is NCPC file 48 of 2021, a two-lot subdivision at 250 Clocks Boulevard, Hamlet of East Massapequa, Town of Oyster Bay, R110 Zoning District. It's a 67,826 square foot area subject property that was subdivided. Lot A was 40,663 square feet, and Lot B was 27,163 square feet. Town of Oyster Bay Zoning Board of Appeals approved the request for variances on Lot A, and then Lot B was considered zoning compliant. The application was originally heard at the September 9, 2021 Planning Commission hearing, and was thereafter approved on September 21st of 2021. So forced today for an extension of time to file the deeds. Resolution was initially signed on October 21st, and was set to expire after 12 months on October 21st of this year. If approved, the new date to file the deeds will be an extended and additional six months, and the applicant will have until April 21st, 2023, to file the appropriate deeds in the county clerk's office. Here today representing the applicant, we have Howard Avertine of Avertine and Associates.
Good morning again. Appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertine, 2116 Merrick Avenue, Merrick. As Mr. Hessel indicated, this application was approved, and the approval resolution certified in October 21, 2021. Separate deeds for the two lots created were submitted to the county clerk for filing on October 3rd, 2021, obviously prior, excuse me, 2022, prior to the one-year expiration, but were rejected based upon an issue that the county clerk raised regarding the legal description in the deeds, and as it compared to the legal meets and bounds set forth on the surveys. So that issue was addressed. Revised surveys were prepared, and they'll, they'll match the deeds identically. I'll request Mr. Hessel to take the revised composite maps, assuming the commission grants the extension of time, so that he can stamp them, because if we try to use the old ones with the new description, they'll reject them again, I suspect. So we don't want that to happen. So we would request the extension of time in order to submit the corrected deeds with the corrected maps.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Anybody in the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I will ask for a motion. Don't all jump at once.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion on NCPC file, minor subdivision file 48 of 2021, that we approve the extension of time to file the deeds for this minor subdivision.
April 21st, 2023. Correct, council?
2023, no?
Yeah.
Okay, so you said 2022. Losing my mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Marty, last but not least.
Okay. This is item number nine, NCPC case number 114322. This is Town of Hempstead, Hamlet of East Meadow, and this is actually the Business X Zone. Inadvertently left that out. This is the construction of a commercial building to be used as a market, unspecified market, of over 44,000 square feet, as, as what of what was previously the Home Depot property along Hempstead Turnpike in, in, in East Meadow. The easterly half of the Home Depot property was recently developed as a CarMax facility. The westly half of the property has been cleared and will be used for the proposed market. All existing access to the entire property will be maintained at a signal, signalized intersection at, at Hempstead Turnpike. Parking variance is required with a total of 477 spaces required for the three buildings on the subject property, with 325 spaces provided. The proposed market requires 223 spaces. It should be noted that there was about 75 spaces provided along Marginal Road of Hempstead Turnpike that may be utilized by the proposed market, but are not counted as part of the parking supply. If these spaces were added, there would be about 400 spaces. A conversation with the applicant's attorney, Bill Benessio, actually, indicated that the patrons of the market would have access to spaces along, along the Marginal Road, along Hempstead Turnpike. But the attorney stated that a parking and traffic information is currently being gathered by a consultant with a report that will be made, made, made available in the near future to the town. I, I think, I wouldn't mind getting that report, deeming this incomplete at this point in time. It's a pretty crowded area there, and it may or may not be problematic, but I, I, I would like to see the, the preparation of that parking traffic analysis.
No worries. Motion on MPC number 114222, Salisbury, Salisbury Partners LLC, Town Hempstead, East Meadow, for, to deem the application incomplete. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Marty, last but not least.
Okay. This is item number nine, NCPC case number 114322. This is Town of Hempstead, Hamlet of East Meadow, and this is actually the Business X Zone. Inadvertently left that out. This is the construction of a commercial building to be used as a market, unspecified market, of over 44,000 square feet, as, as what of what was previously the Home Depot property along Hempstead Turnpike in, in, in East Meadow. The easterly half of the Home Depot property was recently developed as a CarMax facility. The westly half of the property has been cleared and will be used for the proposed market. All existing access to the entire property will be maintained at a signal, signalized intersection at, at